Welcome, everyone. Today's Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, and this is a regular meeting and the yearly reorganization of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. First, I'd like to start off with Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to the New Year of the Zoning Board in Asbury Park. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board and Municipal Website. All notices are in file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers and well to the back of the building. I ask everyone with a cellphone to kindly mute it for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Roll call, please, Marie.
Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Daniel Harris?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Here.
And Chairman Christopher Avaloni?
Here. All right, so the first thing we'll need to do is to do some temporary appointments. First up is Temporary Chair.
I make a motion to appoint Chris Avaloni as Temporary Chair.
I second.
We all second.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion. And I'll make a motion to approve the Temporary Board Attorney, Jack Serpico.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay.
And I'll make a motion for Temporary Board Secretary Marie Rodriguez Oldham.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any votes?
Aye.
All right, so first up is Executive Session. I'll read the resolution into the minutes. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting of the Board in certain circumstances, and whereas the Board hereby moves to close the public hearing and convene and close the executive session in order to discuss staff appointments pursuant to NJS 10:4-12.B.8, which is permitted by the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act for the calendar year 2024, and whereas it is anticipated at this time that the above matter will be made public at the conclusion of the discussions between the Board members. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment that it will hereby close the public portion of this meeting in order to convene in private executive session for the reasons set forth above. I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Do you want me to do the full roll call or?
No.
All in favor?
All in favor. Now, before you actually convene, why don't we get Christopher to sign off on his oath? He's already reappointed, but this way there could be no questions. You don't have to read it aloud. You have to read it to yourself.
Thank you, everybody, for another fabulous four years.
There's no fanfare attached to this.
If you get back in, I hope you follow Trump and become a dictator.
Day one.
Just for day one.
And just never get to give this seat up. Just run. All right, thanks. All right, everybody, let's go to Executive Session.
I will now take roll call. Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Daniel Harris?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Here.
Chairman Avaloni?
All right, so back in session. Do we need a resolution or a motion to?
Just a quick motion.
All right, I make a motion to go back into session after the Executive Session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have nominations and appointments. First up, Chair.
I nominate Chris Avaloni as Chairman for the Zoning Board for 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you, Jack. And thank you, everybody, for your confidence in me, as always. All right, next, I make a motion for John Scully as Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, sir. Congratulations, John.
Thank you, everyone.
I'll make a motion for Marie Oldham, for Rodriguez Oldham, as Board Secretary.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Marie.
I make a motion for Jack Serpico as Board Attorney.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ayes and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Jack.
I'll make a motion for CCH as Board Planner.
I'll second.
I skipped one. Go ahead.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? CCH is in.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I make a motion for the Beekman Attorney Firm as Conflict Attorney.
Second.
Discussion? Any minds? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it? Jeff and Chris.
I'll make a motion for T&amp;M as the Conflict Board Planner.
Second.
John? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it?
So, in this situation with the Board Engineer, this is going to be a temporary appointment since unfortunately, we're losing insight. And I have to say, Doug, and please convey to Jason, you have my gratitude for all the years of service to this Board. Thank you so much. I'm very unhappy losing you guys, and thank you so much again.
Absolutely. I will, and the feeling is mutual. It's been a great experience for me and for Jason. Sad to go, but...
Well, I wish you guys a lot of luck in the future endeavors that you may have.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, I will make a motion as a temporary Board Engineer inside
I'll second.
until we can find an adequate substitution.
Any discussion? Any favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it? You're in for the short haul. All right?
So, I will not make a motion for Conflict Board Engineer until we see what actually how this all plays out.
Sure.
I don't really quite know how it is. And I'll make a motion as AP-TV as our Board Recording Services.
I'll second.
Discussion? Any none? What's vote? Ayes?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it?
I'll make a motion for the Coaster, the Asbury Park Press, as the Zoning Board Official Newspapers for 2024.
I'll second.
Discussion? Any those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Motion carries.
I make a motion to adopt the 2024 Zoning Board Meeting Schedule.
Second.
Discussion? Any none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Schedule adopted.
So, we have three sets of minutes to approve. I make a motion to approve January 10th, July 11th, and December 12th.
Second.
Are we all eligible?
Yeah, you're eligible members.
Yeah. I have who is eligible for each, so you might do one by one.
Well, if they're different people, you may want to pick a different vote for each one.
Yeah, so let's start with...
But I'll get you to speedy, speedy.
Yeah, let's start with January 10th. The eligible members are Daniel Harris, Jill Potter, Chris Avaloni, John Scully, Tim Slick, and Wendy Glassman.
Okay. I have a motion from all of you.
I had a motion for January 10th to adopt the minutes.
All those, any discussion? All those who are eligible to vote, please vote. Affirmative or negative? Affirmative?
Aye.
And Daniel votes? Is adopted.
For July 11, 2023, eligible members are Daniel Harris, Jill Potter, Chris Avaloni, John Scully, and Russell Lewis.
I'll make a motion to adopt July 11th minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those members vote affirmatively or negatively? If you have now, those minutes.
I would just suggest one thing on the actual minutes.
Okay.
There's a 10 at the last end of that line. Just remove Tim and my name.
Oh, was it doubled?
Because we appear twice.
Okay, I will fix that.
Thank you. With those edits and amendments, you vote?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes as amended are adopted.
And I make a motion to adopt... Oh, wait, first, who's eligible?
Yeah, so Jill Potter, Chris Avaloni, John Scully, Daniel Harris, Russell Lewis, Tim Slick, Wendy Glassman.
So, I make a motion to adopt December 12th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
Any discussion or minutes? Any none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it?
And finally, I make a motion to adopt the resolution for 1506 Grand Avenue.
Second.
You have the eligible members?
I have that, yep. So, Chris and John. Okay. Christopher Avaloni?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
John Scully?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Adopted.
And finally, we can get to the application. So, we have two recusals. Both Russell and John are recused.
We still have five, so we still have...
Thanks for the night off. You're very welcome.
See you guys. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone.
All right, good night. Night, honey.
You're lucky, Doug. See you guys. Happy New Year.
Take care.
You want to get down?
Take care, John.
I can't really move over. No.
Okay, sir. Please raise your hand. So, swear in the firm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth.
I do. Read them one of these.
And then, you state, we have the record spelled, and you are in here.
Dennis Werl, W-I-E-R-L.
Thank you.
This is 1201 Bridge Street. So, Mr. Werl, could you give us a quick synopsis of why you're here, what was discussed the last time, and what you're asking for in variances now?
We last spring installed a pool in our backyard on a corner lot. We are seeking variances to expand the patio, to move some pool equipment, to install a gas line for barbecue, and to allow our fence to be a little non-conforming to the... It's just set in a little from where it's supposed to be.
If I recall correctly, it's about 18 inches because of a downspout.
12 inches.
Yeah. I guess that would be the southwest side of the house. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's why I have pictures.
Dennis, hold on one second. Please raise your hand. So, I'm swearing in firm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth.
It is.
Please state your names to the register of your affiliation with the Board.
Tom Miller, Peter Flatter.
You.
Doug Clowen, the Board Engineer.
Thank you.
Go right ahead, please.
So, the last time my husband and I were here, we didn't have clear enough pictures and diagrams of what we were doing. So, we've come back. We submitted at the end of December a new set of photographs. If you'd like, I can take you through kind of one by one. Or if you feel that you want to...
Well, let's start with each variance that you're looking for, Mr. Werl, and we can discuss each variance and how we're going to approach it.
Okay. So, the first variance is for the setback, to move pool equipment into the setback.
And how close are you moving it into the setback?
So, it's about two feet, two and a half feet into the setback.
And right now, it's in the correct location. Is that correct?
Right now, it is in the correct location. Would you like me to go to that cage, please?
Sure.
Because I think it's all stuffed. I was like, I don't know what that is, but yeah, it's all that.
Are you going to P5?
P5.
Okay.
Those are submitted?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready.
Well, do you need to... I think you should mark them anyway, Jack.
So, let's make this whole group of photographs exhibit A3.
Can you mark them, Marie, as A3?
A.
Okay.
I'll put...
All right, so right now, the equipment is in the... I'm going to say the upper right-hand corner. Is that correct? There, yes.
Yes, that is the pool equipment.
Yep.
The... If you can see this red dot here, it's basically at the edge of the large air conditioning unit. That's the mark for the five-foot setback. So, that's...
So, if I drew a line down it, that's... Okay. And then, what pieces are you looking to move?
So, we are looking to move this piece into this corner over here. So, that'll be the one that's going the most into the setback.
And what piece is that?
That is the air conditioning unit for the third floor.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with the pool equipment, correct?
It had... Well, by moving that, it allows us to move the rest of the pool equipment, the pool equipment.
So, your air conditioning condenser is in the way of where your pool equipment
Yes.
would like to be. Is that correct?
Correct.
I see. And by moving the air conditioner condenser, which is a fairly loud piece of equipment, right?
It was installed two years ago. It's not loud at all.
I have a question. Right next to the condenser there, is that... Yeah, where you're... Don't go up to the left of that, where you want to put that thing. Is that paved right now? Or are you going to pave that with concrete?
It is not paved right now. We're not planning on here.
Okay, good, good. Because just the concern... Because you have a lot going on in this part of the yard.
Yes.
So, that's behind... So, that's behind the other condenser?
Yeah.
So, like, he's talking about, right?
See this square thing? He wants to move that here to take up that space.
Right, next to it.
Yep. Just because there's a lot going on in this corner, my concern, quite honestly, is, you know, drainage. You've got that structure there. My concern is for that tree because there's a lot going on in that area.
I'm sure you did the whole layout for that pool. Did no damage to that tree.
Oh, I know.
You did the survey of the pool.
Oh, I know. But, you know, there's a... You know, they want to pave over and, you know, all that stuff. That's all.
If we're not adding any paving to that area, and if the Board would like, if we can take out some of this concrete around the tree, that would be a problem.
So, I have a question. Instead of moving the AC condenser, can you slide the other equipment like in front of the condenser? Or like, can it be configured a different way without moving the condenser?
So, our goal... There are two levels to the backyard patio. This is a step. So, this is the lower level, which lines up with the entrance gate. So, as you walk in, you are seeing all this piping. It also creates... It makes it difficult to walk from here over to the chairs. So, our goal is to move this piping back.
Right, so can it be configured differently without having to move the third-floor AC condenser?
We could probably configure it differently, but thing like... This gas, the heater, could go there. We're concerned about moving the heater too close to the tree, having the hot exhaust against it.
Can I just be reminded of... It's because these... Because none of these pictures are really good for me to understand. What is just on the other side of that tree?
So, on...
That's your neighbor's property, correct?
That's your neighbor's property.
P1, the overview. This is our neighbor's driveway. Our neighbor's garage is right here. Here's the patio. So, the pool equipment is right here. So, on the other side of the fence is our neighbor's driveway.
So, the air conditioning condensers have to be five feet setback from the property line. You understand that, Mr. Werl?
Yes.
Right? So, you're asking to move that one air conditioner condenser practically right into... Right on top of the property line practically, right?
Well, the corner of our house is still two feet from the property line. So, there is still two feet plus there, the width of their driveway.
But again, is there a way to reconfigure all this piping on the concrete pad that's already there?
If I have permission to move equipment all the way over here, I'm sure I can work with my plumber to do that. This just seems the most logical, straightforward way of doing it. If there's a particular...
My only concern is once we give that type of variance, it goes for life with the property, right? And it... Regardless of what happens with your neighbor, whether they approve it or not, that thing is there forever, right? And if they move in a year, the next neighbor might not like the noise.
I'm looking at it.
There's no noise. It might be interrupt.
Wait, no, you can't.
That's... I'm just explaining my concern. And that's why I'm thinking, what else could we do to move some other equipment, to neaten it up so that you get what you want as well?
So, I just want to add to that is that it seems that there is this intense concentration of the equipment right against the neighbor's property. And I understand that it's unsightly to you to have it spread out or moved anyplace else, but the burden of that noise and whatever else happens is really, you know, on the neighbor's property edge.
Does that fence... Is that fence on the other side of the tree, too? We can't see the picture there.
So, the fence turns into chain link to just wrap around, and then there is another solid piece of fence.
Just fence.
That's like the four foot.
And now, there's no noise barrier if it's chain link?
The chain literally just wraps around the tree.
And then, is there another panel, solid panel?
Yeah, it's solid.
If I can't see... You can't... I can't really see her.
How tall is it? The gray one?
The five.
Like, right this, I see this.
Yes, you got fence here. Fence here.
I see that.
And then, chain link around the tree there.
Here.
I feel like it's enough of an opening to just...
I'm sorry, there isn't a clearer picture of that panel, but there is a panel there. And my neighbor, I'm sure, would be happy to testify that there's a panel there.
I think everyone's concerned about putting that other condenser right up against the fence, Mr. Werl.
I understand, but the last time we were here, there was this concern, and the ask was, bring your neighbor. If your neighbor is okay with it... My neighbor plans to live in that house for...
Yeah, that's your side.
You can't say that. Well, if you would like to...
So, we never made any promises, right? And now, when we... For me, I have a much clearer view of what's happening here. And the same concerns that were from November 14th... And I went back and I watched that meeting before showing up here, just to refresh myself. My same concerns are moving that equipment that close to that panel, which is why I'm trying to ask you, is there a way to reconfigure some of the other stuff without having to move the condenser?
I think that I could try... I'm trying to put as little equipment into the setback as possible, which is why the... We were moving this smaller piece there and pushing everything else straight back. If you're... If I can move these two bigger pieces of equipment into the setback here, then I'm sure I can configure it like that.
And what is that cylinder type?
This is the filter, and this is the heater.
Can I ask you, Mr. Werl, what is the main reason of you wanting to move all your equipment around?
Because this row of piping is quite unsightly, and it makes it very... It makes it difficult to...
So, you're telling me there's no way for you to camouflage it?
So, if you're looking here, this kind of... It makes it very difficult. There's not a nice amount of space. If I were to put a big planter in front, it makes it even tougher to walk from there to there.
So, it's for cosmetic reasons only?
The only other option I could see, because I know when we installed it, all the piping comes basically on the... On this side of our basement door, is I could move the condenser over here near our fire pit place chimney, and it would be very much in view from Fourth Avenue.
So, basically, this is for cosmetic reasons?
Yes. Well, cosmetic and to be able to navigate, to be able to walk conveniently to this side of the patio.
Can I ask what?
Did anybody think of this when they were planning the design of the...
Unfortunately, our designer didn't take any of the setbacks into account because if they had, we would have planned differently. By the time... We had already ordered a pool. The initial design had things differently, had the pool differently. So, we are trying to kind of band-aid this situation.
Have you spoken to any landscaper, design people to help you maybe reconfigure this... All this equipment without infiltrating the setbacks?
Or good point, or the pool company.
Yeah.
But when they were putting it in, when they were dropping the equipment, I was like, this is unacceptable. It can't go there. And because of the setbacks, their response was, that's the only place it can go. Again, the setback is here. So, there's no...
So, there's a couple pieces of equipment already overstepping.
Um...
Essentially.
Well, there's various pipes that seem to extend into the setback, right?
Yep.
And what's the rectangle, square thing? No, come forward? Yes, that.
It's an electrical panel
Got it.
with all the controls.
Oh, I see the wires now.
I'm sorry. On sheet five, there's a little pink... The little piece, that's the five-foot mark?
That's what they marked out as the five-foot mark.
You got a lot going on in that little spot.
I definitely do know there's a lot going on in that little spot.
No matter what you do, it's still going to be a lot going on in that little spot. That's what I'm looking at. I mean, you're saying, okay, we want to take what's here, which we shouldn't have put there in the first place, and now we want to correct it, but it's still going to be a lot going on over there. And you're saying that it's not going to bother your neighbor, at least from the sound standpoint, okay? And the functionality of the equipment will stay the same?
Yes. If we move it, the functionality of the equipment will stay the same. And this... I don't believe the sound. I can't hear the equipment now.
When the fan goes on, you can't hear it?
No, it's all like very expensive new equipment.
Do you have a fire extinguisher back there?
Pardon?
Do you have a fire extinguisher back there?
Fire extinguisher.
No, I don't, but if I need one, I can easily put one in.
I don't know the legality of it, I'd just like to see one there, you know, but... You know, it's just a lot going on, that's what's bothering me personally. And I don't know if you, you, you don't have any space to expand it? That's the only place you could put it, correct?
It, it is the only place that we can put that equipment.
So the, coming to the west side, the white pumps coming out, the white pipes coming out of the ground, are those the intake outtake? Like the, the pool water coming in, it gets filtered and heated and it goes back out? So though that piping cannot be moved?
It can be moved, we can, at great expense, which we're totally willing to do, we can dig it up and move it this way. Um, I don't know...
Was it put that way because of the cement pad that's already there, Mr. World? Why is it extending so, why are those pipes extending so far? Uh, it just looks like a very poor design to me.
Can it be buried?
No, the, the pipes are buried to the pool. They need to come out to connect to...
But, but it was done that way because of the cement pad, correct?
Um, no, they were done because here is, I don't know if it's the intake or outtake, but it goes to this initial filter, what I, I, sorry, I don't know exactly.
Isn't that your pressure filter?
And then it goes to this filter. There's no, you know...
What I'm trying to say is, can it be condensed to a smaller?
Not in this, not in this footprint, not in the setback. If, if anything gets moved, we need to, we need to move towards the fence.
Doug, do you have anything to add in terms of, from an engineering perspective? Does, I, 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 to me, it just seems like the piping is, is just extending so far and why?
Yeah, it just seems...
Was that, was that concrete pad put in at the same time as the pool equipment?
No, the concrete pad has been there.
So they did it that way because of the concrete pad, I would suspect?
No, because there's...
Did you even ask those questions, Mr. World?
Yes, I, I, I had many arguments with the pool people about trying to get everything as condensed as possible.
It just looks overwhelmingly like spread out in a huge area. Like somehow it could be condensed to much smaller pieces of pipe and, and it's just an opinion.
I, I, I understand and respect your opinion. I would like it to be as condensed as possible. And when we, if we are allowed to rip it up and redo it, it will be as small as possible, but the footprint of the equipment is the footprint of the equipment. Um...
Just to, to add on to what you're saying, typically when we look at pool equipment pads, as engineers, we always think of them because they add previous coverage, right? So we think of how big they are. Without a heater, a typical pool equipment pad is like three foot by six foot. When you add the heater, I think most times from what I've, my experience, four foot by eight foot is typical. So I don't know, it's hard to tell dimensions of what's going on here.
Does it seem excessively long to you though, Doug, or is it...
Like the piping and the whole configuration?
He's got his own codes that he needs to follow in terms of piping and everything like that. I don't, I'm not intimately familiar with the plumbing code, but
Right.
Um, I see what you're saying, it does look like it's, it's occupying...
I mean, I've seen many pools and I've never seen such a, an excessive amount of vinyl piping above ground. It seems incredibly obsessive to me. And I'm not commenting, I'm, I'm just saying, for some reason, I've never seen it look like this before and I, I, believe me, I've been in many pools.
I think one of the unfortunate issues is we have quite a small backyard and we're trying to maximize the space. Whereas if we have a larger backyard, the, it wouldn't seem that, that way, but you know...
I don't think that has anything to do with it, Mr. World.
Yeah, so let me ask you something. The, the new HVAC, the condenser, can you swing that to face the other direction?
I could rotate it this way.
And then we slide everything?
I, I, when we do that, we're not gonna get these pipes back here.
Unless you take up the cement path.
I have, yeah, I have, I will take up the cement pad, but still, if this gets rotated,
Yeah.
the depth of this, which is, I believe about 24 inches, isn't gonna be enough to, to, we're not gonna gain enough space to move these back here.
But could it come in line with maybe that first step?
Yes, I'd like it to come in line with, with the second step. Um, you know, I...
Or the bottom, I should say the bottom step. Right? If we, if we rotate the condenser and then you might come in line with that from the patio to the first step, which would lessen the visual obscenity when you walk in your side gate.
I don't understand. Tell me to the engineer.
She, it turned it horizontal, it turned the condenser horizontal.
This way. And then it was...
And then you just slide everything around.
And then smoosh all this stuff.
And then you rip up that concrete to give yourself more room to push things back.
There are clearances for this, so I s, I can do that, but I, I can't butt it up against the condenser.
No, 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 no.
But it looks like it's only about a foot or so clearance from your patio, deck, porch, whatever you wanna call it. So you have, no, the back end of the HVAC.
For reference, these are the 20 by 40 tiles. So that's about 40 inches that I would need to...
Yeah, right.
I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to look at it. My concern is that once we start digging up and moving things and disconnecting things, if there's not enough space, then where do we, you know, where, where are we? If you can give grant permission that, that is what we'll, we'll try to do, but if it doesn't work, then we're able to move something.
What will have to happen is you have to come back with specific plans, with dimensions, so that it will work. You'll know, you have to have somebody scale that to say, okay, how much is the distance you're gonna pick up if you turn that condenser sideways?
What we're missing...
You're gonna have to come back with hard numbers, just nobody's gonna wanna make you dig it out and then find out.
Mr. World, what, what we're missing is somebody professional. Please don't take this the wrong way, but you're not an engineer, you're not the pool guy. You're a resident who wants to do something because it cosmetically just doesn't go with your view. So if you had like somebody to help us, like discuss these engineering aspects with, it would be easier for us to say, well, why can't you do this with this, right? You're, you're giving us reasons why you can't do something. You're not coming up with solutions for us. So if we had somebody else in a professional capacity to speak with, it would help us to just have these discussions, right?
Um, sure, I, I just, I...
And just so, I think I can speak for a couple of us here. Because this is an aesthetic reason, it's cosmetic, it's not needed. We're, we're kind of pressing you for more details, not more, just details, because it's not something that's actually needed. You wanna do it because it'll look possibly nicer.
And, yeah, I, totally under, understandable. Um, I, I will say I'm a little frustrated. Um, I think if some of these points were raised two months ago, um...
We did raise them though.
But the only concern that was...
We couldn't see what you wanted to do, Mr. World. The, the pictures you provided us gave us no clue. And, and unfortunately, while we have a better view now, we can only go on what we're looking at in a picture. We can't discuss this architecturally with somebody. We can't discuss this engineerally with someone. We can only ask you questions that you can't answer.
Okay.
Is the, is the pool contractor still involved, the, the...
Yeah, I, I can, I'm, if, if...
And is he the one that did the original pool equipment layout?
Then that would be a good person to be able to...
I'm sure I can.
You gotta, you gotta give the board numbers. They've gotta be able to scale this thing that says, okay, if you turn this, condenser's certain way... Yeah, you gotta have a design and schematic so that they can actually see the hard distances. How much space in fact will you pick up? If you can turn that sideways, if you can shorten those pipes, if you can move it back so much, they're gonna need to know the number. So that it'll help, it'll help them to figure it out and it'll help you that they just don't give you, go ahead, try it and if it doesn't work, uh, you've gone through all this money, we're stuck. We don't want that either. We don't, we don't wanna put you up against the wall type of thing.
All right, can we, um, move on to the other items? Because it is possible that my husband and I couldn't decide that we wouldn't want to pursue this.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
You know...
But we can't give you a, an approval for your application unless you've decided to abandon certain variances, Mr. World. You can't, you would still have to come back to us and make those, uh, and those comments to us that you no longer want to move the equipment.
Okay.
Are you willing to say that you will no longer move the equipment now?
Not, not at this point, but I would appreciate being able to discuss the other variances, which are completely unrelated to that, because then it makes it very easy for me to, we can have a conversation and know, A, whether or not we want to do that or B, if you need more detail about other parts of the variance application.
So I can, I can tell you right now, D, install your five foot fence on the southwest, 12 inches beyond the edge, I'm okay with that.
As well as I?
I don't have an issue.
We don't have an issue with your fence?
I agree with that.
You're good with that.
Yep, so I can tell you that's not gonna be an issue for me. Now that I have that photo and I understand, I'm okay, I, for me, I'm speaking, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
And C, for myself, running your gas line, while I think the barbecue's far away from your house, you know what, if that's what you wanna do, I'm, I'm okay with the gas line.
Um, you said C?
Um, your number C on your, the run, on your, on our, on our sheet.
On our applications, yeah.
It's the running the gas line for the barbecue 13 feet from the house?
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm okay with running the gas line as long as our professionals don't see a reason why it can't be done. Um...
I, I, I don't think you're gonna get a, 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 a problem with the gas line, Mr. World.
No, where's the grill gonna sit by the fence, right?
Is the grill gonna be where, where it is now?
Grill is gonna be where it is now.
And can you just point out where the gas line's gonna be coming from?
So the gas lot, the gas meter is here. Um, there is a T valve outside where the gas line runs to the, to the, here. There would be another T and it would just run...
So you've got this area all highlighted in pink, right? Are you saying you're going to put all those tiles in that pink area?
So that was the other part of our application is we would like permission to extend the, into the setback here because right now, these chairs are quite close to the edge of the pool.
Uh huh.
Um, and then we would like to also...
So essentially, you, you wanna concrete your whole backyard?
We would like to pave it and if you look at the overview, because when you look at just the, the picture of the backyard, it looks like we've gotten rid of all of the grass on our property. And that's actually not the case. We have a very green property.
But it's not so much getting rid of the grass as it is, where does the water go?
Water.
That falls from the sky, that comes from your leaders. So instead of going into the grass or the ground that's currently surrounding your pool, now with it, with pavers, where does that water get diverted to? Is it the neighbor to the west? Is it, like, it's not going back into the ground to our water table, so where's it going?
So the coverage is under the maximum for the lot with that addition of cavers. The house gutters flow to a pop-up drain outside of the fence, so the majority of the house isn't there. We submitted, as requested, an updated, um, topographical drawing that extends
Ten feet.
Ten feet into the neighbor's property.
I don't know who was here, whether it was Doug Jason, but one of those guys asked for that topography report.
And so drainage, I understand there's the roof leaders on the back of the house going out to a pop-up drain. It looks like, you know, the pool and the patio area, half of it, half of it is pitched to drain out towards the street, which, um, you know, as you mentioned, it is compliant with coverage. That's, you know, that's where we want it to go. The issue is what's it doing to the neighboring property, just to be east or north? And, you know, it's hard, you know, based on what I'm seeing on the plan, it will be very hard to construct. It looks like they're trying to propose like a small swale between the edge of the patio and the fence, which would be next to impossible to construct. But there are things we can do, um, to help capture that water, such as installing a channel drain along the perimeter of the patio to capture that water.
Like a, along this...
Along the northern, the northern patio, that would be, that you share with your neighbor.
No, the other, the other way.
Yep, that one.
That small pink area.
Yes, correct.
Cause you don't want your water running towards their garage or their driveway.
Yeah, if we need, if there's drainage that we need to add to do that, we're amenable to doing.
So as long as your coverage is below the, the, the minimum, right? I, I, I don't really have an issue, as long as we, we can come up with a way that the water is going to be not infiltrating your neighbor's yards.
Similarly, with the way the roof leaders go to a pop-up, if you put a channel drain along, I think you're using Jensen?
Yeah.
Uh, if you put a channel drain along the patio, that could drain also to either a pop-up or some sort of overflow inlet um, out near the pool drain.
And are you only concerned about the north side with the Z and T? Is there any concern about this side?
On that side, there's more room, there's about six feet, so to me...
You're not planning to pave that area as well, are you?
You can, you can develop, build a swale and, and creating, is showing a swale being installed there. So if it's done right, um, that can, that can work.
So you would have to work with our board engineer, Mr. World? And as long as you can meet the requirements for whatever, you know, they suggest in terms of preventing water infiltration into your neighbor's yards, then we're, we're okay with your...
Oh, just to clarify, Doug, it does meet, it doesn't over, it doesn't exceed coverage, right? He's, from what you're seeing in this, he's still okay? Okay.
Awesome.
So are, are we good then?
So we will come back with our pool guy. We will come back with measured drawings of how the pool equipment can be reconfigured. Um...
And, and keep in mind, Mr. World, you wanna minimize as much as possible moving into the setbacks that are required, right?
I understand that and I, and I appreciate your desire to do that. And I'm happy to have them draw that out, but I don't believe, being a, I'm a graphic designer, I measure, like, I, I literally, like, I've measured this out and so while we could get an inch or two, we're, we're not, like, without going into the setback, we're not really, I, I don't believe that we're gonna get, gain much space, but I'm more than happy to come back with a couple of different options that we can discuss.
You have to understand, I'm gonna give you the law, okay? That doesn't, you have to prove your case for this variance. It's usually recognized... It's usually recognized that it has to be some compelling reason based on the shape, size, topography of the property, not the subjective feelings of the property owner that are the basis for the grant of the variance. So you have to come back prepared to give the board criteria that meets the law. It isn't just a matter of you've done your best to minimize it. This is what I want, they'll say yes. That's not it, that's not the criteria. The criteria is you've got to prove to them there's some nexus as to why you're doing this beyond your subjective desire to do it. And yet, yeah, that, I mean, that's the law, I mean, we have no choice, we have to apply the law. It isn't a matter of, uh, whether the board likes it or not aesthetically, that's not the issue. That's, that's, that's a consideration, but that's not a dispositive consideration. So they, you, you have to give the board criteria that they can apply the ordinance and the law to vary, to vary, to deviate from that ordinance. So that's, that's your task. So you've got to come up with some kind of bureaucratic designer, you can work with numbers and how to do things. I'm sure you're very talented, you're gonna have to figure out how to make this thing fit as best you can. A de minimis variance, a certain percentage, God bless you, something small, the board, it's a lot easier for a board to say yes, but if you're going wholesale into side yard setbacks and it's basically because it's a, it's a subjective thing or an aesthetic thing, that's not the criteria.
We, we don't grant variances on people's wants and desires.
That, that's why I was saying you need the technical data to support your case.
So I, I do want to clarify one thing that, um, the patio expansion does conform for the coverage, but it does go into the side yard, that's a variance.
Yeah, it does encroach.
So-
I'm not a fan of it, quite honestly.
I don't know if you need more conversation about, you know, getting consensus on whether-
It, it is encroaching again into the setback, we, we, we understand that.
Yeah.
By how much?
The whole, the whole-
This, this whole thing is, is in, yeah.
Well, so that's against the fence.
And the fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how close is it?
The neighbor's fence, not the fourth half of the fence.
Do we have anything saying how close that grill can be to the fence?
What, the paver?
No, the grill.
Grill itself.
Oh, I, I don't know that.
Yeah.
You have to ask Donna.
That's not his only thing.
It's not, because I do not want to set my new fence on fire. It is, it is about two feet away from the fence.
That's close, God, don't, that's close. Uh, that, that, that's my concern.
You might love that vinyl.
Being an average, average person with grills, you know, and the other thing I would love to see was just a simple fire extinguisher over there by that grill.
I'm happy to put fire extinguishers in my backyard, that's not a, that's not an issue.
To Donna's point, the last variance it sounds like is that encroachment into the side yard setback of the patio pavers on both sides. So whether or not you're comfortable with that, you gotta, let's land, let's get it out. Find out where we stand.
To be honest, Mr. World, just because your, your, your chaise lounges don't fit as well as you would like on your patio is not really a great reason for us to say you can extend it. Again, i- it's, it, it's not a necessity or, or something that, you know, we, you generally agree to, even though you are under the minimum coverage rate, just because your, your chaises are just a little too close to the edge of the pool is not a great reason.
Um-
And as for the other side, you don't have to make that whole space and intrude into the setback? I mean, and you can put your chaises on that side, right?
We're gonna, we'll be putting our dining room table on this side.
So here's the, here's the problem, we can put it a different way and I think that's what is frustrating to hear is that you made some choices about how you wanted to live in your backyard, but it's a, it's a small yard and maybe it was overbuilt and you're asking us to approve these variances so you can, so you don't have to make changes to the sort of, the mistakes, the design mistakes that were made.
I, I totally understand. If, and I told both, like, my pool, the pool contractor and the landscape contractor, if we had been clear on these things when we were designing, we would have, before we did anything, we would have come before the board-
So you're using ignorance of your property as-
Like, that's, we would have, we would have done it that way. Unfortunately, we, we had, we had a pool on order, the paperwork went in, things, and so we're now trying to, to fix it.
Well, how does that relate to the side yard encroachment of this proposed meeting?
It's, it's like, it's compounding, it's, it's compounding the, the problem of a lack of understanding to say, well, you wanted a, now you want a dining room table to fit over there. And it's like, okay, what other furniture would you like to move in? We don't know what to do with this, so. I, what do we, you do with all these-
I, you know-
Design thoughts that you have?
I, I'm, I believe I could put key gravel down and put my dining- Like, I, I'm just, I'm trying to get the vision that we want. I, if, if that's not possible, then it's, it's not possible and we'll do, we'll do something else. What, um, yeah, if, if, if you're, I, I, it, in my mind, doesn't seem unreasonable, but i- if it seems unreasonable to the board, then, um, then, yeah, well, we, we'll enjoy our backyard in, in another way. I, I just, um, it's, it's-
You, you're, you're coming after the fact to us, Mr. World. You, you understand and you're saying-
Yes, I do, I understand.
And, and you, you're not giving us concrete reasons other than it's what you want, right? And, and we don't grant variances based on the fact that you want a table there, right? We need to understand, is there a necessity for a table there?
The necessity for the encroachment with the paver?
Yeah, what you do with the space is up to you. You have to justify why the board should deviate from the, from the law. Setback requirement, so allow you to get the pavers. From a zoning perspective, not, not paving or a design perspective, it has to be based on zoning criteria because you're asking them to variant, to deviate from the variant, the zoning requirements.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the way, it has to work that way. So if it ever turns out to be subjective, it has to be based on a rational reason from a zoning perspective as to why the board would grant variances.
And, and if you had an attorney, Mr. World, and, and this is not just a comment, he would have helped explain some of these things to you so that when you approached the board, you, you had all the ammunition you needed to talk to us.
I, I guess-
I was actually just gonna say the same thing.
By, from our personal experience, when we did the addition on the house, it was a very straightforward process, um-
Well, to that point, it was because you were probably guided by your engineer, your architect, and the attorney who all made it very simple for us. Because I sat and I-
And I did too.
I, I, I was one of the ones that approved your addition and it was one of the easiest ones I think we had all that year. And now it seems so easy for you because they took care of everything to make sure it conformed.
Yeah, we had, we, we had like five variances on that project. But, um, yeah, we'll, we'll, my husband and I will regroup. We will, um, speak to an attorney and figure out if, uh, how we want to move forward.
So on, on that note, perhaps we'll move on to a different date for Mr. World and Mr. Gaylord to come back.
I know. Do you want to hear testimony from the neighbor so she doesn't have to come back? Or do you want to wait until the whole thing is presented?
Well, we don't know what he's gonna end up doing with the equipment, right?
And how, and how much the encroachment on the side yard setback would be?
So it, it may not be, well, I mean, we can hear her comment. Um, I, I assume she's going to tell us that she doesn't have any problem with the noise.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to hear what she has to say.
Okay, all right.
I'm just that I'm-
Well, no, 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 no.
You got, there's a process. Come on up, come on up. Right there. I'll help you through it, don't worry. Please raise your right hand. You've signed the swear or firm, the testimony you're about to give in this matter with the truth, the whole truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address.
Uh, my legal name is Ann, A-N-N.
Okay.
C, C, um, middle initial C, Cotter, C-O-T-T-E-R.
And where do you reside?
Uh, 1203 Bridge Street in Asbury Park.
So it's fair to say that you're on the other side of that fence there?
Completely fair to say that.
Okay, so this way we get some reference. Why don't you, unless you know the questions to ask or you want me to help here?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, you've heard the testimony this evening?
I have.
And the representations of what he's trying to do.
Mm-hmm, yes.
From our perspective, we have to also consider the privacy and the effect on the neighbors.
Of course.
So what is your feeling about the relocation of the pool equipment closer to your property?
Um, I, I don't think it will make any difference at all to us. Um, and I'll tell you why. Number one, I've never heard the pool equipment. We spend a fair amount of time in our backyard, I garden back there and it is next to the driveway. Um, but, you know, I've, um, refinished some furniture and do some of my potting over there and, um, I mean, I hear, um, you know, when they have guests over, I can hear people talking and, and water splashing, but I, I can't say that I've ever actually heard, um, any equipment.
I have no questions.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, do you have any, are you in favor of the, or against the application? So avoid the public hearing portion?
I'm for it, sure.
Okay, all right.
All right, well, you appreciate your testimony.
Any questions you want to ask, Mr. World, that I didn't ask?
Um, no.
Okay, great.
And the fence, you were talking about the fence.
Go right ahead.
So we, um, there, you know, it's, it's two, was it five feet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's about as tall as me. Um, and there's a little bit of a, because there's a tree there, there's some chain, um, chain link, but, um, it doesn't, um-
It completes on the other side of the tree, though.
Chain, it's not visible to you, it's on the inside, wrapping around the tree, is that correct?
Um, no, I can see it.
Okay.
Yeah, a little bit, but it's just-
On the outside of the tree. Either side of the tree has the holes, but the link is on our side of the property.
I just want to verify that, that's all.
Whose tree is it? Your tree?
Um, we treat it as it is, our tree, that we share it. Um, when we, when we've had, um, it pruned or trimmed, we've always split the costs, um, because-
It's right on the property line though, right?
Well, the little, there's a little strip of dirt between our house and their driveway, which is technically our property, which is, which is why, like, there's another two feet of the setback on the opposite side, but we don't, we don't view it as our, our property really because it's connected to there, so they garden and plant and, and tend that. Um, so we just, we view the tree as ours because it's, yeah, it's shading both of our properties.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Am I finished?
Yes. I mean, I would ask for questions from the public, but we have no public, so.
And they, they have more at the next meeting?
We might, right, right. So we need now, Mr. World, an agreement for a date for you guys to come back.
Uh, later.
Our next meeting is probably already full, is that correct, Marie?
We would be looking at, um, so it is. We have availability in March. We have March 12th or March 26th, or April is open, but, um-
Um, March 26th.
March 26th?
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay? All right, so-
That'll give you enough time to consult with some professionals to-
We need you to wait, there, there's a statutory, well, situation that says, if you wait, boards have a certain amount of time to act on an application that's suspended, okay? If you say no to this question, you're gonna make them vote. You don't want to make them vote.
I understand.
It's not in your best interest. So the answer is I need you to say that you'll extend the time within which the board can act until that meeting date.
I agree.
Thank you, very, yeah, it serves your best interests as well.
So I'll make a motion to carry 1201 Bridge Street to March 26th, you said? 2024, without further notice.
I'll second.
So members that are eligible? Because I'm going by from previous or?
Is there anybody here tied that's not eligible?
Well, Tim had to watch.
Yeah, but he certified, he filed a certification.
So everybody's eligible.
Everyone is now eligible.
Okay, so then we can just do a voice, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, adjourned till, uh, March 26th, not further.
2024.
Thank you, Mr. World.
Thank you.
And I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for the kickoff to the new 2024 zoning board year.
Yes, indeed.